Todd, can you take a look on your Android and tell me if names are getting cut off in the message window? Maybe Chantel, if you could also let me know. If you look at the feed, Chantel. You know how there's like a message reaction input field?
Yeah.
Yeah, are the name, first names being cut off within the name way too short with dot, dot, dot?
Let me see.
Mine, there's some that, no, actually they're not. Mine look to show a first name.
Depends on the name. Amin fits. Wellington does not.
Is Wellington not fit because it's right up against the emojis or they're not fit with plenty of room?
Um, eh, well, honestly, I think if it didn't have the dot, 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 the N would work. Cause it goes to the T O.
Okay.
But if the N was there, it would be butted right up to the heart, so.
What version? Jerry's what?
Jerry's name fits. Amin's name fits. It's just Wellington.
Okay, and what um, version are you in?
Forty one.
Okay, do you have a phone in forty?
Uh, I don't know. Let me see what my iPhone.
Production, it's was in the Play Store.
Yeah.
Chantel.
It's in the Play Store?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me see.
Todd, you have an extra Android, right? Look, will you check forty?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in, I'm in forty and um, all the names like from names like Aria, Amanda, Dane, Galen, um, Victoria. These names, these are all Lizzie, these are all first names that I'm seeing and then a dot, 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 and they look like they're full first names.
I don't know why this other one. This other guy's phones looks like that. I'll have to have these guys take a look. Okay.
Do we know what phone he's using?
I just got a weird Windows application error. Never seen that before. Reference memory could not be written.
What the heck is your, on your laptop?
Yeah, well, you're gonna crash. Um, what, what did you ask me?
Oh, I was asking if that was on your Windows laptop.
Before that?
Um. Uh, oh, do we know what, uh, what phone that person has?
Uh, I can find out. I just, I know it was an Android.
Right.
Does all on you. But I can get more info. I want to start with bigger potential problems. Jerry, um, and Amin, can we look into this contact import situation?
I'm already looking at it. So I'm looking. And let's see, there's only one little thing that I could suspect about it. Uh, because I'm looking at the logs and I'm not seeing any errors. Right now, I see this person has all their contacts. Um.
Which one?
The, the one, uh.
One when it starts with an M?
Yeah, the one where it starts with an M. I see they have all their contacts. Um.
We know we batch them when they come in, right?
Right. I can see that they had five hundred and thirty contacts. We got five hundred and thirty contacts like right now. I'm saying all their contacts now. Why? Not during onboarding. So I know right now that like Marissa, uh, Marissa would be like suggested because there is an emoji in the name.
Yeah, you, I, if you watch the session replay, you can see.
It, it starts with, uh, Mark. I, I can see that.
Yeah, definitely starts with M.
It starts with M and I would say maybe if there was like some even number that that started at, but I, I see Mark starts at three twenty-eight out of five thirty, um, which is right after Marissa.
So you think the emoji pulling the emoji somehow changed the order?
No, I don't think. I'm looking at the. I'm trying to find the logs that I can. Let's see, what's this? Is this, is this all the contacts? No, this is.
Let me send that other one to Amin. Um, Amin, I suspect that in onboarding, I saw a session replay where a user again did not allow the contact permission, but changed their mind in onboarding, went to settings, allowed the permission. This is in build forty. Um, and the suggestions went away, but then the contact showed up, but then there was still no contacts. The, the header for contacts showed up, but then there was still no contacts.
They were taken back to the step where they impose contacts.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
And Jerry, did you get back? Did you confirm they did allow the permission?
Who, who is this now? Is this who we're?
Uh, actually, look, I don't have. Let me send you the link once.
Also.
Did you ever watch the session replay, Jerry? I have it here.
Which user are we talking?
Five, three, nine, zero.
Five, five, three, nine, zero. Okay, let me, let me find our replay.
Okay, I have it too.
Okay, Android, let's see. Okay, five, five, three, nine, zero, five, five, three, nine, zero. We do not have any contacts from five, five, three, nine, zero.
Yes, you mentioned that, but I'm curious. I'm sending it to you, Amin, now Slack. I'm curious if the permission was granted.
I don't see where a contact sync was triggered right here. I, I see where the, um, I see where the, the sync contacts button is gone. I do not see where we, on this replay you're talking about where the session replay was like triggered. I'm, I'm sorry, uh, where?
Permission.
Yep.
Granted.
I see, okay, so the sync contact button is not there. I do not see where the backend call was made.
Cause the header changes. And then the user does attempt to add contacts, um, through the search bar. I'm also noticing something on the session replay I didn't notice before. Off, it says off session expired, like they, they got it. The SMS code is expired. Please resend verification to try again. I noticed that first time. It's to be Android, I don't know.
Here's a bug I could tell you, um, when they come in, when they refresh their app, somebody else and there's like another circle, something in their circle of trust. It wasn't there when they backgrounded the app and when they come back, it suddenly comes up and.
I see circles, buddy.
Wait, there's a second one to come back and it's like some random thing called circles that's in there now.
Mm-hmm. Could be.
Yeah, this is called body, I guess. Cause if you look, no. I don't know why it cannot pause it. Like in the SOT, like the circles body with the image, I think it's the same one. Yeah, it's like, just there's some duplicate issue there.
Okay. I don't know.
Also, um, Jerry, like, do we have contacts for this user?
I do not see contacts. Um, now, it's where a contact sync was triggered. Maybe they like allowed contacts and they allowed partial?
Yeah, maybe that. Uh, let me see. I have some console logs there. Um, let me see. Yes, it's granted, uh, to better the, um, didn't log how many they allow. Like, oh, oh, yeah, amplitude, like we do, um, uh, log that to amplitude to see how many contacts uh, were shared. Um, do we have the input for this user?
Uh, yeah, I can find, I can get it for five, five, three, nine, zero. I don't, I don't see an amplitude log that a contact sync was performed or anything about their contacts other than the initial denying of the contacts. And I see they pressed the sync contact button.
So we don't have any contacts for this user.
That's what Jerry's saying.
I don't see anything.
I'll see your question. Um, do you see the new contact sync performed event being fired there?
I do not.
It is sending me the, the, the user ID or the link that you're looking at into the, please?
Uh, the one, you want to know the contact that we're, the user we're looking at now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, five, five, thirty, nine, zero.
Thank you.
I mean, which, which build did we solve the problem of skipping the follow screen?
I think it's in thirty-eight, something like that. Is this user forty?
This one's forty, but I have screens skipped on a build of thirty-eight for a user where they definitely allowed contacts. Was it thirty-nine? Maybe?
Um, also there was like some an issue with the things being skipped, like we discussed like three days ago, four days.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Like this user, it should be having the latest like of everything. Um, I'm trying to look through the amplitude, like the events there. So if the user was taken back to that screen, it should be. Um, uh, there should be some events locked there, but I don't see them. So maybe something is missing.
Okay. What, did they have an inviter, Jerry? Because maybe the circles buddy was the inviter, some, somehow the circles buddy showed up twice.
Well, it does show twice until they come back in. The first, I don't see.
Definitely odd.
Their inviter. They don't have an inviter.
Yeah, they don't have an inviter.
Okay. Yeah, a lot of odd things here. Um. Yeah, uh, I'll, I'm gonna go through more. All the session replays had issues. Every single one. But, um, let's start with the bigger ones. This contact imports is a problem.
So I assume we got his contacts. I wonder.
Wait, you said we did not.
Wait, okay, no, sorry. We're talking about two different users. No.
Right.
Yep. Let me not switch topics.
Yeah. Let's talk about this. This guy's in Minnesota. And, um, I mean, you can see that contacts were denied at first, but then definitely went to settings and the header changed and says your contacts now instead of suggestions. But then there's nothing under your contacts. There, by the way, there was also nothing under suggestions and that was suspicious to me too. If you look at the session replay, Jerry.
Yes.
Minute, minute thirty-two in, also no suggestions? That, that's impossible, right?
Let me see. Hmm. I don't see any suggestions for them.
Don't we? I guess I know on the cool kids screen that's hardcoded, but we don't have any.
Let's see.
Suppose we ought to throw some celebrities in there or something, you know?
Yeah, we could have, uh, we could, we could have a fallback list. Let's see.
Yeah.
Cause if somebody had, think about it, if somebody has no contacts and nobody has them in their contacts, then it's really hard to, um, really hard to make something of that. Yeah, nobody has this person in their contacts.
Right. And. Let's see, they're on, uh.
Now.
Android.
Um, what we could do is we slick, let me see, encircle that.
So it's not like they went and allowed contacts but limited and then zero, cause that would be an iOS thing. I don't know if you can do that on Android. They're on Android fifteen. Is that even possible for them to go allow the permission and then still not allow any?
Wait, they're, they're, and I thought like the iOS, so they're Android?
The one you're watching is Android.
So yeah, so when you allow Android, like you, you allow every context. There's no such thing as Russian allow. Okay.
We should see them.
We should see them. Yes.
Right, but Jerry's saying, wait, did you say the, the permission was not granted, Jerry?
It is granted.
It is granted.
Yeah.
It is granted. Okay, so we, so he went back and granted the permission.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so where are the contacts? I think this is the second session replay I watched in build forty where we failed to upload, import either some or all contacts, cause there's another user where we got their contacts, Amin, but they started at the letter M.
Hmm, let me, let me see, like after the sync button, if the mutation for importing contacts was triggered.
Okay. The good news is people are using the sync contacts button and going through settings. So, I mean, I see it often now. So that's great. We just need everything to work.
Yeah, I also see we got this person's contacts and, um, something that normally what I would see is, um, maybe if the contacts uploaded in chunks or something, um, I, I would see. I mean, it's possible that's where a chunk was cut off, but, um.
You talking about the one where it starts with M?
Yeah, where it starts with M. I was looking back to see if we like got their contacts a second time and that's why I see all their contacts.
Mm-hmm.
But no, we got all their contacts the first time. From what, from what I see, they were all imported, yeah, June twelve, two seventeen UTC. Um.
Well, right, but maybe they got them later after like going to the circle trust edit or something, you know?
Hmm, no, cause we should be waiting. Let me see where this list cuts off at, actually. So this list cuts off right here and, or do I create a name? So if we would have missed that. Cause when this, hmm, no, the, the first person that you would see actually that, like somebody named Adam, I mean, not Aaron. There's a contact named Aaron that was the first contact that we reported that we retrieved. But we don't see Aaron. There is a V two that I made for contact import that maybe we should give it a go because it's more, it's a more, it adds an extra step, but it should improve the reliability of the contacts. I don't know if.
Why didn't, why didn't we use it?
Why didn't we use it? Because we made a change where we made sure we waited for all the API calls to finish. Um, it's just something that wasn't implemented, but I'm pretty sure it's ready to go.
I, I don't get why we worked on it but didn't finish it. What, we didn't think we needed it? I mean, what, did, you must have worked on it because you thought we needed it.
Yeah. I, I handed it off, um, to Amin, but just, let's see, import up the, I mean, there are seventeen contacts, V two. Yeah, I said upload contact V two, but actually this was back in March. I don't know if this was implemented yet.
Okay. Um, you don't know if we implemented it?
Um, I could check the code. Take the front end code, but no, I don't see it in there.
Well, like, did we discuss that we should be using this mutation and we agreed on it, but it's not there?
All I see is a, a check mark. You, you put a check mark next to it. Let me see if I can like. Oh, I didn't send it to me. I sent it to Ismail back in March. Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, um, I have lots of questions. Um, so, I mean, this probably was the most important part of.
Here's the thing though, too, Dawn, is that actually the contacts, the suggestions, I think we did get their contacts, but it starts in reverse alphabetical.
Who's?
It starts in M. When it, on that list, it's showing in reverse alphabetical.
Well, M is not reversed, it's the middle.
M is not reversed, it's in the middle, but if you sort their names, let's see. If you sort their name. Okay, well, they have some Zacks. They have.
Yeah, they have Aaron and Zach. I mean, I think we can be sure something failed there with that batch. I'm suspecting there's a problem overall because this other user had none. And, um, I'm just wondering how many other users have had this problem over time.
I think there's two different issues though between these two. I think it's two different issues. Uh, the one that we did get their contacts, but it started with M.
Yeah.
I think what happened there is, um, or actually let me do this to. I think it just didn't show. Let me make sure. Okay, descending. Yeah, it's interesting. So I'm looking at the batches and M is not in any of the batches, like, but, okay, that's another day, but yeah, it's like the contacts were showing partially uploaded, uh, for this one user. That's why it doesn't have all their contacts that appear. Um, so we got their contacts upfront, whereas the other user, they went back and allowed contacts after the fact.
True.
Um. But I almost, okay, so the first one, I think could be resolved by trying out that V two mutation. However, it just has to be tested very well, just because it's a change to contact import that works. I mean, we know it works somewhat now. It's not, it doesn't work what we want, but I would like to try what the V two does because it does simplify some things. The only thing that it would run a risk of is if it, if that cleanup step doesn't run, I don't think the user would, would see any contacts. So that cleanup step is going to be very important.
Um, okay, I don't know how, what is the cleanup stuff?
The way that it works is that, um, there are users, so we have, we have a, it's a two-part process that we do. So I do see we have the staging table and that's for a whole, that's for a whole other discussion. Um, but we load everything into that staging table and then we load, then we process it. But the problem of it is, is that when users have a bunch of contacts and we upload their contacts in these batches, I'm thinking that whenever we're uploading multiple batches at the same time, there runs a risk of there being some kind of desync because we're running two batches at the same time. And maybe that could mess up the timings in a way where we don't get all the contacts. What I'm thinking, um, so what the cleanup step does is for the V two, we don't run that second part of the V one, but we run it all at once in V two. It's a little, it's a bit more efficient too.
Why?
What's that?
Why didn't we use it?
Why didn't we use it? Because it was never, it was never done. I don't, I don't know. That's poor my time.
You sent it to Ismail, I said?
Oh, yeah, this was, yeah, back in March, March twenty-seven.
So you just don't, you don't recall him installing it or?
I, I have the latest developer branch of the, of the front end code. I don't see this mutation anywhere. Because what, what I was gonna prompt is we could add in an extra step that whenever you get the running dog animation, it, it's like, oh, uh, when we trigger that final step, we can be like, oh, just finishing up like a little progress indicator.
Sure. Sure, um. Uh, yeah, actually Zenly had a mid step where it said something like, whoa, you have a lot of contacts.
Right.
So that's necessary for some reason?
Yes, well, I wouldn't say it's necessary. I would say it's ideal. It would be ideal because of what this process does and I could imagine if there is a hiccup, it could be because of that.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Cause what we're waiting on now is we're waiting on all these mutations to finish. And then we're like going to the next step. It seems that there, there's just something, something off in the timing of this. I, I don't know if it's, I, I'm almost thinking the front end was off in the timing because I'm looking in the backend. I don't see where we like tried to re-import this person's contacts. See, I, I would, I would say we didn't get their contacts or there's something more on the backend if I'm looking through amplitude and if I saw for this user, there was an event for contact, like I think Wells even said the contact sync performed.
Mm-hmm.
If, if I would have saw that, I would have said, hmm, maybe we did not get all their contacts at the same time, but I'm looking at this one and from what I see, it's pretty confident that we did get all their contacts upfront, but it's just that maybe the front end was a little too ambitious. And even if, even if it's a matter of a hundred milliseconds, if it, if it tried to get the list of content, like the list of, hmm, no, I wouldn't think it would be actually a hundred milliseconds now that I think about it because the contacts and circle step, cause that takes a second. So why did this user, because see this user, let me, let me grab their, their contacts that would be in circles. Circle of contact, uh, and. Let's see. So this user. Uh, when it says your contacts already in circles, it started with Holly Wiley, which is, which is an H, by the way. Holly Wiley, we see that. That's another thing too. It says that we got, so there should be, oh, oh, let me, let me um, order it, order by name. So. There's actually. Let's see Janet, Janet House Smith. Oh, this is not in alphabetical order. This is.
What's up, Amin?
Like, yeah, I'm looking through the session replay, like after the user did a sync contacts, it was not taken back. It was like, like from the session replay. It wasn't the SOT directly, like.
I don't think that. Has happened yet. I think, let me watch again, um.
Yeah, cuz like that's what I'm seeing.
Where, where would you wanna take him back to? I thought you said we're not gonna take him back to the dog running.
We, we are, but it's gonna be taking them two steps back. So we can go through the toolkit screen and the other screen where he wants to follow.
I don't think it.
Well, tha- that's how I'm doing in the code.
Let me make sure I'm right about that. I can't remember now, but. Right, it was not doing that at first, right? It was. But then in the code, you wanted to make it go back further.
Yeah, to the con, to uh, where are you gonna be importing contacts in? Well, if he's not seeing the dog, but uh, that. It, it could be an issue there where the dog is not running, but the other two steps, like the more uh, like. The cool kids screen and the users to follow, those, they should be there for sure. And decision play, I'm not seeing them again, like when he sings contacts, so that's.
Also, it's possible that because it's session replay, you're not seeing it. Like sometimes session replays start. I'm, I might see it start on the birthday screen even though.
But this is just one session replay. Yeah, it'd be, but like, this is the one session replay.
What do you mean? I'm saying session replay skips sections sometimes.
Okay.
Like it's, I don't know if that's what happened here. It probably didn't, and I say that because. He was pretty quick from the settings to get back to the apps, but it's still possible. That we're not seeing the screen, cuz like when someone backgrounds and comes back, like you don't always just see exactly where they come back. Um, even when the session replay begins, so what I was trying to say is a brand new user. Very, only one session replay ever. Sometimes I see that their session replay does not begin at the welcome screen. There's, I can, sometimes I see it start. All the way to the phone number screen.
Okay, but like the amplitude, like when we log events.
Amplitude should be very accurate.
Yeah, like some e, some events they need to be like double, for example, the one that says. Uh, what is it? Uh, contact step completed. This is when a user do next on the cookie screen, I guess. This, this we should be two, like the one before the sync button, one after the sync button. But there's only one instance of that in implicit events for this user.
I see, okay. Is this an Android thing or is this across the board?
Uh, I don't think it's on Android. It could be like across the board, just. Trying to think why it's not taking that user there back because it's. Unless. Unless this is fading, okay, that's.
I thought we tested this as well with Todd. Todd, didn't we test um. Not allowing contacts permission on an Android and then while in onboarding. Going to the settings and then enabling the permission and sharing, and then did they import? Did we test that?
That's a good question. I, I, I feel like we have, but I can't, I can't be certain.
I, I have another binding too, so this user, when I found her session replay, um. So it said they had nine contacts in circles to follow. That, that number's accurate. We have all their contacts that are in the app. The one that we did get contacts for, but it started at M. I, I'm just trying to piece this together. So I saw they had thirteen contacts that are in circles, but the screen said follow nine. I found out that three of the contacts are after this user onboarded. And.
Which, which one? Let's make sure we're talking about the right one.
This is the one that, that you said started at M.
Okay, cuz that's not what I'm talking to Amin about.
Okay, I'm sorry, but let me, I'll just keep working on my own. Come back when you're ready. I'll. I'll keep coming up stuff, yep.
Cuz I wanna make sure. We investigate these thoroughly. Part of it sounds like a potential front end issue, but i- if there, I mean, if, I mean, if you have questions for Jerry or anybody else, let me know.
Yeah, right now I think it's a front end issue. Because. I don't from, from input to logs, I don't see the user.
Try the test, right? Um, this is build forty, so Todd could go.
Yeah.
The Google Play Store on Android. Um, don't allow the permissions for contacts. Okay, you can, you should use a phone that does have contacts.
Yep.
May, may, may need to wipe them from the backend if you've already on-boarded with those contacts before.
Okay.
Do you have a test phone?
Yeah, let me grab one here.
Okay, send the phone number to Jerry and he'll make it so that no contacts were ever imported.
Got it, okay. Okay, so once I do that, I won't allow contact permissions.
You get to build your circle trust, there'll be a sync contact button.
Yep.
And you'll tap it, it'll take you to settings.
Okay, yep.
And then you'll allow.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Want you to screen record all of it.
Yeah, of course, okay. Alright, give me a minute to get this phone prepped and I'll get the information to Jerry to clear out.
Okay.
Uh, the contacts.
Okay, and this one did, for sure did not have an inviter. How, why did he end up with two circles buddies? That's weird. That's some, gotta be some kind of clue, right Jerry?
Well, so I'm almost thinking this is the front end doing it because it wasn't there the first time. It was only when they came back.
Yeah.
So something almost added it in there.
Well, we add it, like we add it to returning users, I think.
Well. No, we, I, I don't, I, I would not, it's impossible to add a duplicate in the SOT from the backend. Like they're gonna base will error out if you try to add the same user more than once.
It's still not added yet, cuz.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's anything that we did from the backend here, but I think it has something to do with what happened when they came back from the background.
Mm-hmm, that's true. Well, let's hope, like if we can reduce it.
Yeah, okay, let's see what happens when Todd does it. Jerry, you for sure saw we were at four point seven stars in the App Store?
We were.
It's really weird. We're at four point six now and there's.
It was four point seven. I, I wish I should have reached out it, but it was.
Alright, yeah, no, there's new reviews that showed up that are from weeks ago. It's really weird. Um, I check often most recent. It was always the same two trolls at the top that only. Created uh, an account for us, cuz you can tell by the name and um. Now there's, there's reviews in between theirs that are go back weeks, all of a sudden. I don't get it. So I don't know where. Oh, actually, some people did say they were gonna update the reviews, so that could explain that now that I think about it, so. Though, and they're, they're five stars, so that, that, that means. The people who said they're gonna go update the review, they probably, instead of just the star review, they actually wrote a review, which is, which is cool. Those were, those ended up being five stars. But I think you notified a troll. I wanna remove people that aren't investors from that chat. I think you. Got somebody to fucking troll us and put a one star, cuz like, uh, Danny would be able to tell us. Danny, are you listening?
Yes, I'm listening.
There was a calculation you did where in the Apple App Store, you were able to. Determine like how many more words we, we would need, like are we on the threshold or did we?
I have to go back and look, um, but I can run the calculation again.
Okay, yeah, I'm curious how close we are to the threshold because.
Yeah, I saw, and I did see it at four point seven stars as well with my own eyes.
Yeah, I feel like there's somebody in investorship. We know there's like fifty people in there that aren't actually investors confirmed, right?
Yeah, I can tell you how many, but I, I'm.
You gave us a list a while back. We'll, uh, we'll look at that later. I don't wanna distract everybody, but. I'm trying to multitask here. So do you have Danny? Will you take a look at that and let me know?
Yeah.
Okay. Irritating, someone just had to be a fucking troll.
Yeah, well, somebody just said, can someone invite me to the investor chat, please and thank you in the Mag and Army. Chat, but at, at least that.
Oh, you know what? Rob must have mentioned it on the air today.
Yeah, that's cuz Rob's mentioning it. Um, well, we'll, um. We'll send them um, that link to their email. We'll, we'll get to that later. Let's just, let's stay focused on this contact import.
I understand, yeah. I think this is mostly for Amin right now, but I have my things I'm looking at. Actually, Todd just sent me the numbers, so let me.
Zane's been purging out some of that Neverboard Club. I've seen people kinda getting removed from it.
Yes.
Something to keep in mind, like it wouldn't be that hard for someone to get, you know, upset about being removed, who's just lurking and. Quiet, write a bad, you know, hit a bad rating.
Yeah, it's a lot of work to do that and it's the timing of it suspicious cuz like, the timing's a little too perfect.
Yeah.
Right when we jumped up a number.
Yeah.
And talked about it in a very closed loop chat. I suspect. There are people in there we don't want. So Amin, are you waiting for Todd now?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so I, Jerry just checked. I don't have any contacts um, in this account in circles, so we didn't have to clear anything. So I'm going to.
Yeah, do you have contacts on that phone?
I'm, I'm checking right now. It's not, I don't have a couple.
That's, I don't think that, that's a good test though, or we really want to test with hundreds of contacts.
Say again?
Are, are we testing just to see if the contact import works? Or are we seeing if it works when?
We're just gonna try and recreate this whole problem and don't forget, we're not talking about the one that started at M.
Sorry, yeah, okay, this person that, that like was on the SOT step and back, back in, okay.
Yeah, went to settings, re-enabled the permission. Yeah, I wanna recreate it. And you are recording, Todd?
I will be, yes.
I mean, this is taking years to get right. I don't understand how it's so difficult. The part that bugs me the most is that we have to batch anything. I still don't get that. That sounds ridiculous. They're just contacts. They're not videos and images and. Like, how is it in twenty twenty-five? We can't just import in one batch a thousand contacts? How, how much data could that possibly be?
Well, my suggestion right now is why not try it?
Well, we have to make sure it's, I mean, from what I understand, SQL Server itself. Is built in like limited to do that for whatever reason. I don't quite get that, but why? Was fundamentally limited?
Doesn't make. It doesn't sound familiar to me.
That's what Eric kept saying, and then I thought you, I remember, I thought you confirmed that.
Um, I mean, that was, that was last year. I'd have to try it, but who's to say we can't just try? I mean.
Right.
Just, just dialing, like changing a couple knobs, changing a couple numbers and see what happens.
Yeah. I mean, do you wanna look into that first instead?
The front end has to.
Alright.
Patch and just see what happens.
So I think we are on the threshold. I think it rounds up when it gets to six, five. And uh, if you take away one, one star review, we go from four point six, four, six to four point six, five, one.
Well, yeah, but that's not as easy as just getting one more five star review.
No, so you're wondering how many more when you get back to four point six, five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if it's like twenty. Then someone put a one star review. Just to be dick.
Let's see. Well, I think that is what happened, but let's see.
It's not a written one.
No. Looks like ten should do it.
Are you serious?
But let me, let's take a look at the actual counts here. Let me get a screenshot of it. I could tell you exactly how many five stars we have, how many four, how many. Three, how many two, how many one, and I can see the fours, the threes, the twos. Have not changed in months because I remember where they were at. The one star reviews were at thirty-six when we first started tracking. Now they're at thirty-nine.
Are you kidding?
The five stars are up to five twenty-four and those were in the four hundreds.
Right. Well, I guess that's why we're doing circles, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, so just make sure I do not allow contacts, right?
Yeah.
Let's find your friends. Don't allow, okay, don't allow. See our most people you know.
Yeah, when you get to um. The build your circle trust screen, you should have suggestions. Let me know if there are any suggestions.
Well, there's no suggestion.
Does it say suggestions as a header?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm at the, let's build your circle uh, trust screen and move over. At your best friends. And there are suggestions and options to sync contacts.
Okay, so you see names under suggestions?
I do, I see Danny, Tom Flores, John, Tom Fiore, Danny Andorley, Single.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and hit the sync contacts button. And then go to settings.
Alright, and settings, go to settings, here I go.
Allowed full permission. Do you have choice, was it only permission?
It's allow, it's allow or don't allow.
Good, allow.
Actually, yeah, that's right.
Allow, you're recording, right?
I am.
Okay, allow, and then go back to the app.
Now I'm back into let's build your circle of trust screen.
That's a problem.
Yeah, so you are in the circle of trust screen, you're not in, like you were taken directly there.
I was taking right, I went back back from my setting screens, put me back to a screen that says let's build your circle of trust. One and now what's there is there is the circle's buddy with his profile image there, which which has always been there. And then, but now there's another person, it's another circle's buddy with no profile.
Right, does it, does it also say your contacts with nothing under it?
Um, no.
What is it, what?
It says the, these are your top friends, remember MySpace, choose up to eight, and then there's an arrow to continue.
Hit forward?
Yep.
And what does it say there under the search bar?
Your best friends. And the search for friends.
Under the search bar?
Under the search bars as suggestions.
Okay, that's different, I mean.
Well, yeah, that's different, but at least. Uh, we can reduce it like it was not taken to the other screen.
True.
We should, uh, let me see what's.
While you're looking at that, I mean, I'm gonna have Todd test the exact same thing, Todd, on an iPhone. Cuz we're gonna narrow down if this is Android specific. Cuz also, I mean, let's ask Todd a couple more questions, it sounds like Todd pressed the back back, I don't know what that means, does that mean you press back back from? Your phone's built in back button?
Correct, on this Pixel, there's a, the setting screens have a back button at the top left of the screen.
Okay, and the user, I mean, that we've been looking at is also on a Pixel.
The back back was on the settings now that.
You pressed it, Todd pressed it from the nav bar built into the.
Yeah, no, 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 not, it wasn't a nav, it wasn't like the normal nav bar you used to see. It was a, a, it was a back arrow at the top left of the screen built into the settings screen.
So, yeah, that's. Okay, yeah, that's fine, you just add that, so uh just so you can go back to your circles app.
Yeah, okay, so iOS does that too, I I was making, I thought you were saying it was on the lower nav bar.
No.
Okay, so that probably is not a factor, I mean.
No, like, that's, no, because he's he's not in our app yet, he's in the settings app, so.
Should I continue to the next screen, does it matter at this point?
When, I think, right now we just stay on iOS to see.
Yeah.
It's still recording, the screen recorded.
Yeah, go ahead and stop. Recording, and then let's give um Jerry an iPhone phone number you have. And um have him clear those contacts. Okay, let me get an update from Amit while we're here. Um, Amit, you uh had a few things to look at that I sent you yesterday.
Uh, yes, John, so so first thing, the place closed one now, so uh you can check it now on QA.
First thing, first thing was what, which one?
Uh, place was showing you close or when it is open, right?
That's right, yeah, why is that?
So like, uh, we discussed mine, I stand up, I need to check and look up, uh, look up the code what we have it, so I made the fixes there. So like, adjusted for like, uh, problem was with the uh nine, suppose they, they just start from nine AM to twelve AM. And then nine AM to two thirty AM also, that was the problem, so I fixed it. And I tested for the all the businesses which you sent me and Jerry sent me, so it is giving me correctly. So we need proper testing also there, so it is on QA currently, Jerry, right?
Repeat it again?
Play business hour changes.
Yeah. Yeah, did we tested it, you tested in QA?
Yes, yes.
So if I go on my. Test flight.
What was that it pointed to QA on test flight, I tested using API.
And I'll.
Wanted to QA, test flight?
Yeah, build forty-one.
Build?
Let me. You're gonna build forty-one.
What do you want?
Go to. Profiles. And I go to Raising Cane's. Yeah, Raising Cane says open now. Which is correct, I would like to try though. I'd like to try when they're not open.
Okay, I got them also, and Danny also, sorry, John also searched about one business, can you please just that one, one I will tell you.
The business I sent yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. I'm looking at it in production, but I mean, it's, the problem is uh was that. After three PM my time. It was showing. Closed. Oh, actually, the hours are still not updated in production, let me check that business in QA. So the hours should also be correct, right?
Hours, what we are getting from the Google, we are returning it there. Hours, we are not changing anything.
They'll, remember, I showed you the screenshots, so they're wrong. Um, compared to what's in Google.
So it is coming from the.
You're wrong, yeah, the um. In in QA, it says they close at three PM, you know, I was there at four thirty. And um, and then I looked in Google just to make sure, and their hours do say they close at five PM. Man, I sent you a screenshot of that, so. What, but yeah, five star auto center, yes.
So what Google is returning, uh, what?
Yeah, how could, why would they, why would Google return? Us the wrong hours, but show the right hours on their website. That would be messed up, I hope that was happening.
Something to do with um time zones?
If maybe on our end, I don't, yeah.
Right.
I don't, I doubt. Jerry, Jerry, you still looking into this uh?
We were all day, I have taken medicines, I'm feeling well now.
No worries, take your time, so Jerry, looking at the uh contacts importing incorrectly there still?
Um, yeah, and and the more I look at it. The more it appears that we did get the contacts, but I noted one very key thing. That would have messed up their view. That being the um. Uh, for the contacts, I wasn't sorting by the name, so it was just showing whatever it wanted to show.
Interesting.
So that's why it started from M, because it wasn't using a particular sort order when I reran it. Uh, if I go in the database and I go by the the contact key. Which there there's no way you can like create a contact key before you create another, like you can't. They're they're made, they're created in the order that they're inserted into the database, like this is like the source of truth, and from what I see, like. Yeah, Adam, Adam Stravina, like he is. He is first in this batch, um, yeah, let's see. So, yeah, Adam. Sturdivant, yeah, he would have been first, so I see we have contacts with As. That were created. Created first, so I think it's something to do with the sorting that. That might have messed up the impression here. I I did update the query, and now we're gonna be, we're gonna be sorting it.
Okay, and did you clear Todd's iPhone contacts?
Uh, area Monroe, sorry, I'm just seeing that one, let me. So, Ariya Monroe only has two contacts. But delete contact. Okay, that is done in a. Yep, okay, that's ready, they're deleted.
Do it for Todd. On the iPhone. Todd, you there?
Yep, yeah, I'm here, I'm going to hit screen record on iPhone.
Yep.
And then go through onboarding.
Same process, yeah, go to the. Sync contact button. And go to settings. And allow the formal.
And welcome back. Okay, and let's find your friends, pick some friends, okay, um. So. Don't allow. There are more people you may know and some cool kids. Build your circle of trust, shows my circle of trust from last time. Okay, so I have the sync contacts button there under search.
Uh, John, sorry.
Wait, hold on, wait, just hold on one second. Go ahead, Todd.
Okay, so sync contacts. Settings, go to settings, okay?
Yeah.
I'm in settings, uh, says contacts none. So go ahead and change that to full access.
Yeah.
Okay. Allow full access.
Yeah.
And now I just have the options to go back. On the screen. And then back one more time. And actually one more time. And I'm actually still on the settings screen, then put me back into the app in any way, I have to go open or. Yeah, I don't have a.
There's probably like a little thing that says circles with the arrow up in the upper left corner, but that's alright, you can.
I'm back into the app.
Any way you get back in is fine, cuz other users will do the same thing.
Right, so now I'm back where it shows, let's build your circle of trust.
Stop for a sec, so it did not back you up any steps? Uh, remember MySpace?
Correct, that, yeah.
So that did not back you up, really, it's actually kind of the same screen, so it's supposed to back you up. Two screens from there, so, okay, do you have two circles buddies?
I only have one circle's buddy.
Okay. Um, and then if you go forward. And where it says add your best friends at the top.
Correct.
And then, does it say suggestions down below, or it say your contacts?
It does, there's, it says suggestions.
That's interesting, um, okay, go ahead and stop recording, and Jerry, can you check and see if we imported Todd's contacts on that phone just now?
The Ariya Monroe?
Yeah.
Alright.
Have to do a podcast in an hour, less than an hour.
Negative, no contacts.
So we have problems here, okay, so I mean, and maybe, and we checked the Android too, I mean, we did not even get the contacts when Todd did that, so.
Yeah, because he was not taken back to that screen where the imports happened. Well, like, we did not change anything, like, and I just, I mean, that this I was doing, maybe it was not like. Through this, cuz my contacts were not wiped, so I'm not sure if we did.
We talked about that, you have to wipe them, because.
Yeah, like.
If you ever install them.
Yeah, besides, I mean, like, did anyone else worked on, tested this, and it was working? Or this is the first time we, like, actually?
I thought we did test it once, but I can't remember, I mean, we're moving quick, um. But.
Because like.
Still, I still am confused why the screen recorder sent this morning, why that guy's doesn't say yours, doesn't say suggestions and says. Your, the the header changed, your contacts, it's as though we fetched it like right, that can't. That couldn't happen, could it?
Um, if it, for that user, it was saying your contact, and. Let me, let me look there.
Yeah. Maybe it's.
Was not, it was not saying suggestions because there was no suggested. Users uh for for that one, that one user.
It originally did say suggestions for him until he went back to settings, but maybe that's just totally separate. And just.
It did, uh, after that, let me see, what could change there?
It might be just because.
Because maybe he just brought back to the app. Um, I I'm seeing something that could. Maybe because it was brought. Back to that step where it should not be, actually, it should be taken back to tapes back. So, once we fix this, I guess that's just still will be fixed. Things will be working in the order.
Yeah. It's, it looks, yeah, it's not even worth about that part of it, just cuz. It might have nothing to do with this, let's fix the main problem.
Okay, now I have to see why, um. Well, yeah, uh, I will like, Jerry, like, do we have like, can you, can you give me a mutation that I just gonna call, it's gonna wipe my contacts? Instead of not getting every time, like, is there's a mutation there?
You need a mutation to delete your contacts?
Yeah, like the same we were doing with Todd right now, so I can actually test it and see what's going on. I mean, I I want, the mutation I wanted just for myself, something that I can do to wipe my contacts instead of going back to you every time, if that's fine for you.
Yeah, let me see if I can whip something up. I have.
Skill, like command, I can man, I I don't have, um. Yeah, so he has on, uh, uh. After Jerry is gonna wipe my contacts, I'll. I'll, um, I'll try to see if I can reproduce them myself, which I think will be, then I will.
Just, since he has to whip something up, that's gonna take a minute, but why don't you have him wipe for now, since he can do it for the first try?
Yeah, Jerry, um.
So send him your phone number, I mean.
It's the five, 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 five.
All fives?
Yeah.
Dookie, one second. I think QA, right?
Yeah, QA.
Alright, you have twelve contacts in the race.
Okay, um, let me know when you're ready, I mean, and if you need anything, let me go to, back to Almit. So Almit, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, yes, John, so like, yeah, I pointed what was this, so this Google is sending us up now the updated time. Hours there, but inside our code, what we're doing, I will tell you currently what we are doing now. We are checking when, when we last checked the business assets. And it is operational or not, so, so we are not doing updating our in case of our personal. Our personal, so whatever in the database, we are showing returning, but like I see it is changed. So now we need to handle that condition, so I handle it, so give me five minutes, you can test it.
Okay, I don't, still don't get why we're. Getting anything other than what's. It's okay.
So here, see. You can see this is the hours, I came to see here, this is our, in the, our database.
Why, where did we get that from?
Earlier, so when we store the business now.
Maybe that was their hours in the past?
Past hours, it was there. The, 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 all business had changed the hours, so this is from hours from the current Google API.
Okay.
Okay, and what we currently, we are checking based on the status last check. So here, status last check is null, and inside our code, we are, business is operational, so we are not updating this one. Like, we need to check if a status is null and optional also, in that case, we need to update the hour.
Okay, so operational, does that have to do with if they're closed temporarily or closed permanently?
Well, yeah, that we already handling closed temporarily, I close it, so.
Operational, that's a new one to me. They're operating hours.
Yes.
I see. Updating the hours regularly?
In thirty days, it will updating the hours.
Got it, okay. Yeah, let me know when I can test it then. Okay, and so Jerry, you found the potential problem was simply a sort thing, and it's not that we didn't get the batch.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me, because, because, because the, uh, keys. The keys are, are the source of truth here.
I see, so. So, um, that, this maybe was happening before, but it wasn't. Just, it just wasn't detected.
With our new algorithm for suggestions, that's. Because we went to exclusively using this query when they allowed contacts, that's what brought this up. Because we're showing this query now whether or not they, they allowed contacts.
Okay, now what about the V two thing, actually, you have me worried that we're not using the right. Version of our contacting for, and then there's also the question of, do we just try and batch them all at once?
Um, I would like to try the V two if we make any changes.
Okay, what about the batching all at once?
Well. Basically, actually, hold on, let me think about this, if we batch them all at once. There would be no need for the V two because of, of the process.
It's some simple, like, it's, it's, I just don't get why we can't do the nice clean, like, there's the contacts. There they are now, over here.
I said, let's just give it a go, you know?
I can't remember the logic around why it was necessary, I mean, you, you and Eric separately told me different reasons logically. Why they have to be batched, like, maybe had something to do with, um. There's different kinds of contacts, I don't remember. Like, you know, there's emails.
Well. And we don't, we don't import emails anymore.
Right.
The way I'm seeing it is just give it a shot, see what happens, like, we don't have to roll this in the prod, we can just.
How would we try this out, would you like maybe just wipe out mine and then?
Well, we would need a build that does this.
Okay, well, let's let Amin finish up what he's doing and then we'll talk to him about it. The fix you found though, are you implementing that now, are you pushing it to production or?
What fix are we talking about?
The sorting?
Oh, sort, yeah, yeah, it's already in pride.
Okay. Okay, and so now this user and other users who have no suggestions. Can we provide some type of fallback, and are, and are we certain? There was no suggestions?
There was no suggestions, they allowed no contacts and nobody had them in their contacts. So that's why we're at a dead end, but what I'm thinking what we can do for a suggestion list is maybe. This person's in Minnesota, and there's like fifteen people in circles in Minnesota. What if we just like load people with that same area code?
Right, I was thinking something like that.
That would be. Maybe.
Might get lucky.
Better than nothing.
Yeah, might get lucky, um. There's another user also has no suggestions, and, um. I wanna see if it's the same, this one seems more suspicious to me, let me send you the. Session replay because. They type in a name and find the name. So, I'm thinking that there's no connection here, and why, and why not, let me send you the session replay. I'm not on the screen of Google meets, did somebody, Almit, is your greater, okay, what's up?
Yes, John, can we check it now?
Okay, sure, yeah, and then Jerry, check that out, um, because. That user again has no suggestions, but. Does have obviously connection to somebody in the app, because they've searched the name, find the name, add the name to their circle trust. In fact, does it not update the suggestions after that?
It should, that would be for Amin to answer, but I'm looking, uh, yeah, this person has, uh, and this person have. Um, yeah, Milano, well, this Milano would be somebody I think that is following them or they're following.
Not yet, right? I mean, maybe not, like, but not, this was during onboarding. And yeah, the hours are now correct, it appears.
So it was a problem.
Yeah, can you push this fix to production?
Uh, Jerry, can I?
Cool, yeah, um.
And apart from the John, like this duplicate transit card.
Yeah.
So, uh, the, uh, the, when you ping me now, Jerry already removed that duplicate one from the, uh, database. And someone other real one like within after thirty seconds, so he did not remove that part, so Jerry will discuss more with you.
Yeah, John, I think, I think, I think it sounds like you would increase that buffer.
Yeah, thirty seconds, nah.
It's thirty, it's right now, and.
Yeah, I feel like we should make it almost like a day, like, or, you know.
An hour?
An hour at least, yeah.
Let's do it, let's do an hour.
Okay.
Okay.
Smile's good, thank you, okay, and then let's go back to this user that had no suggestions.
Yeah, they have, um, no contacts, they did not allow contacts and the user. Let's see, do this, and no one has in their contacts.
Well, did this Milano person not? Have, have shared contacts with us?
Uh, Milano, so Milano is somebody that I think they're following, right?
Well, they searched the name in onboarding, if you go to the, about ten minutes into the session replay. I probably, I should have told you that, um, go ten minutes, twenty seven seconds.
And they searched for Milano?
Yeah, you know, you know, onboarding.
Okay, and now let me go in Milano. Um, oh, but you're saying they should, yeah, they should have Milano's like circle of contacts almost?
Yeah, Milano had shared, maybe Milano didn't, but if Milano shared contacts, I presume Milano would have had this guy.
Well, actually, the second that they, that they added Milano, that should have come in with some more names.
That too. So, yeah, multiple things.
Yeah, that should have added more names when they added Milano, but.
Maybe it did, the session replay so quick that they did not. They did not X out of her name. Let me think about this for a sec, um.
Milano did not allow contacts either. Why we're like pretty dead in the water.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we should have updated the lit, because like what, what happened here on the front end is that. Her name is still in the search field. Now, we could clear it out. When she's added and then add, and then show suggested under it, it's probably, probably be smart to do that. In this case, just a little bit of an edge case, maybe you would have. Found some, would, would there have been suggestions after that? Can you do a little mock sample there?
Would have been, there would have been. A good few, there would have been.
Yes, because Milano probably has friends.
Zane, Laurent, Leo Martinez, Nicholas, I think it would have put in Milano's S O T.
So then this guy obviously is connected to that circle in some way, but there was no invite? I think our invite is not. Because that one, I, I, I suspect, I'd asked you earlier about this.
Adrian does not have an inviter, so let me do this.
But I think, I think maybe, I think this might be the user that was tagged, or this, it might not be this one, but another one I believe was tagged in a check in.
Yeah, this person would not have been tagged because they're not in anybody's contacts to begin with.
Yeah.
And now if I go to invites.
Must have clicked some link, right?
Nope, and there's no invites of their name or number.
I wonder if they scanned a QR code. That's what I, I want, we need to check everything end to end, because I guarantee we start checking these things end to end and we'll find. Somewhere along the line. Of a defect. Back to the tagged user one. Um, it's, I know it's not this guy, but there was another one where. It appears they were tagged because the message in the lobby says you were tagging, checking when they arrived, so I'm presuming they were. Tagged as an external user, but they have no inviter, you confirm that.
Who, who's this?
I'll, I'll get that one, I have it here, um, I don't wanna muddy the waters yet, but I, I get, my point being. I think some of it isn't fully encompassing. Our whole system inviting, crediting invites and all that, and that may. I suspect it may have happened here with this, this guy, Adrian, the seven six O area code, because.
Adrian, Adrian was not tagged by anybody, he's not in anybody's context where he could have been tagged.
Yeah, but that's not what I'm referring to, I'm saying he might have clicked a link in somebody's Instagram. Or may have had, had an invite link from a chat or something.
There's no invite, like, there's, if he would have entered a phone number on the campaign page. Then that would be different, like, if he was, I would see if he entered his number on the campaign page and then there was no connection. Like, no inviter connection there, like, yeah, that's a defect, but I don't see the thing that I'm really depending on looking for is. Like an invite request, we have an invite request table that just has phone numbers, and for there to be an inviter. There has to be something in there, or if you go on the check in route, he has to be in somebody's contacts to begin with. And I see neither.
Yeah. So, but I wanna rule out that this user did not. So I'm having trouble session replay, I wanna rule out this user did not. Tap somebody's link somewhere. And I'm not convinced, because he came in from somewhere, so he, the options are. If you, he found the app totally randomly through the App Store. He found the app through somebody promoting it. Campaign link style, like through Instagram or whatever else, he came in through an invite from a chat. Or, you know, tagged in the check in, there's only a few possibilities, I don't think he came in totally randomly, because the person he searched for. Is in Zane's circle of friends, so that starts narrowing it down to. He either heard, you know, he obviously heard about us through those, those people. And took it upon himself to just type circles into the App Store, which is totally possible, or. Did tap a link somewhere and we're not tracking it properly, so for some reason.
Okay, do I have this person's IP address? Yeah, one seventy four, let's see.
Tried to add an unlisted business as well.
Okay, oh, we have, okay, so I see they viewed an invite link now, let's. This invite link, well, okay, it's the same IP address.
Yeah, I'm glad you're looking at, see, I suspect that case, now they might not have entered their phone number.
Yeah, I don't see they, I don't see where they entered their phone number, and they, they view this invite. Oh, they viewed this invite like four days ago. It's the same IP address.
And they onboarded nineteen hours ago.
Yeah, but this was from the seventh.
Right, so maybe they went there, didn't enter the phone number, and then nineteen hours ago, went to the App Store manually.
It, it was an invite code for Monica Burns. Which is not who they looked up.
True. Now, there's some interesting connections though you're making, which could have, add more suggestions.
This IP address though, another thing is, it could totally be, um. An IP address that's like shared. Yeah, it is, I, I see there's another user that. Another user with that same IP address.
Interesting, that's.
Who's this number, who's this person?
It's rare, right, like, they'd have been in the same apartment building.
Ah, and that person with the same IP address is Monica Burns. So, there is a connection between Monica Burns and this person that onboarded. And, yeah, it could be that they're connecting to the same wifi. So, if, if they're, you know, at the same coffee shop or something, yeah, they would, their IP address would be similar.
Shontel, um, this user we're talking about, by the way, added an unlisted business in Sacramento. Nineteen hours ago. Do you see one for approval Broadway?
Yep, I was just looking it up.
Are you keeping up on these?
Yeah, I check it every day.
Okay, good, and.
The only one in here right now.
Okay, cool, so that.
Something almost every single day.
That process worked, okay, that's. That process worked, okay, that's good. Um, I want the whole process to work, I want this person to get notified that it was accepted. Which is going tricky, because number one, I don't think they allow notifications, let me go check that. They did not allow notifications. Um, I feel like it'd be fair to text them and tell them. But we don't have it that set up yet.
Yeah, I, one of the things I don't know is, uh, that's working is if I deny it. It says for me to give a reason, I just don't know if that's actually being sent to them.
Good question.
I've I've only denied a couple, uh, that's because they didn't enter in like anything.
Okay, yeah.
So I like, I I'm, if you don't give me anything, like. I think the one thing that might be broken, actually, now that I think about it.
Yeah, so I'm looking, it has three required fields.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Well, do me a favor and test every edge case you can think of, like, is it possible to hit submit without the required fields? Is it?
Yeah.
Is it possible that they are filled out but not coming to you for some reason?
Yeah, the one thing I do the most of honestly is um. People are entering in unlisted businesses that are already in the app. So I just, um, I I search it, if it's got a full location, I always search it in the app to see if it's just already in there. And if it is, I just uh share it with the person who did the request and say, hey. I saw that you put in an unlisted business, but it's already here in circles, here it is.
Okay, well, maybe we can work with. Gary on um having a. A check of some kind where if they enter, try and enter an unlisted service, but it does exist. He runs a check that says to us that this already exists, and then the front end would have to have a modal. That says, would you like to add this one? This one is already in circles or something.
Yeah, I did have one situation where um I was doing a check on the information. And I ended up reaching out to Cherry about it, because it was, the website had a slight typo. It was just like one letter off, and I don't want it to go to a four oh four when it could go to the website, you know? So I had him change that. It would be good if I could have a editing ability before.
Good, yeah, and then and something automated, because if these, if we get hundreds of these a day, it would, it would be nice if they. Notified the user that the business already existed.
Yeah.
Okay, so make a note of that when we have some free time, maybe later in the week or next week or something to. See if we can, shouldn't be that hard, we're getting a name of the business, the city, state. That should be enough, especially with a phone number. But um, yeah, we'll cross our berths, so anyway, keep that in mind. And. If you're, if you're ready to validate this business, go for it. And then, um, Jerry, where did we leave off just now?
Um, let me shoot, and we're talking about the contacts.
I gotta be on a podcast in twenty four minutes and I haven't showered yet.
Oh, we're talking about that use that Minnesota person and their IP address.
Yeah.
The connection, um, there. Yeah, it's possible that maybe we're like at the same coffee shop or something, but that's the only connection I can make.
There's more to all that story. Yeah, I want to dive back into it. Look, I gotta step away for a minute. Actually, I stepped away for like. At least forty five minutes, but I don't want to stop what we're doing here, this very critical, all of it. Everything Amin is doing and you're doing with contacts and and um. I mean, that's the main stuff right now, that's our. Our our red alert, let me uh. Let me take, take a break here, but I want, will you guys stick with this, please, and um. I don't want everyone to just drop, I want, I want this, I want this tested thoroughly and fixed. And if there is some downtime or anything like that, maybe you could look at the submit a business, the uh unlisted service with Shontel and see if there is a way to. Do a check on it, because I have a feeling people will start adding unlisted services. Not realizing they could have just searched for the ones that we have.
Yeah, this one's the perfect example, that's exactly what it is, Broadway department's already in here.
It is, okay, let's see if, let's use this one as an example. This is the.
So I shouldn't have denied it and shared it yet.
Not yet.
Okay, I was literally just doing that, so I'm glad we said that.
Yeah, let's use this one as an example, this is the session replay you were just looking at most recently, Jerry, for. The seven six O area code, he tried to add an unlisted service, but it does exist. In our database, so I would like to see if this would have, if there would, if there's a check we could have run. Under this scenario that would have alerted this user when they hit submit for approval. And then we pop up a modal and say, is this the business you're looking for, and maybe even have the image of the business and. And then, and maybe even ask them to favorite it at that point.
Yeah.
Step one is, is is the required field we're getting enough. To suggest that this business already exists.
Well, we have an address and we have a name.
Right.
Um, we have an address, we have a name. We could attempt to do a Google API search for it. And we'll see if there's something with a high enough confidence. And then um. And then if there is something with a certain threshold that I can see if Google gives me a confidence threshold. I can suggest that to the user, um.
Okay, I want to let you guys handle it, I gotta drop off for a little while, I'll be back.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, Shontel, you want to test that form and um see if there's anything, I think that form's all front end, I don't think that form's a web view, so. We would have to have any changes probably done by Amin or Wells.
Shontel?
Yeah, sorry, I was a little distracted responding to Wells, um, so test out that form.
Yeah, test out the form, yeah, see, see if it works with all the suggest, the required fields, nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then if we have a need changes, we probably have to go through Amin for it as well, like as these suggestions, like, oh, is this your place? Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see, Amin, yes, if we're deploying QA, can I get pass authentication? Okay, what happened here? Let's see. What the heck? Or like this bill. If I just rerun all the jobs. UA should be working, I mean, what are you getting from the mutation? And may maybe that's the verify phone number mutation. Ah, let me do this. Be right back, go, I get my lunch.
I'm dropping off, Jerry.
I think he said he was gonna step away to grab some lunch.
Okay, so I'm dropping off, let me know if you require anything.
Sounds good.